All right, Mr. Mayor, it is a little after 1:00 and we are all here and ready.
All right, then let us begin. Good afternoon. It is 1:00 PM, February 4, 2021, and I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I'm going to ask Jesse Ecknroth, our Director of Public Works.
Ready? Begin.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in a visible liberty and justice world.
All right, Kristi, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Kite?
Preston?
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Hobart?
Here.
We'll move to non-agenda public comments, and Isaiah, would you move that forward?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We will now open up our non-agenda public comment period. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on issues that are not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes. If you are part of--
Can I-- I'm sorry to interrupt you, but on my screen there's a white square about 3 and 1/2 or 4 inches by 3 and 1/2 by 4, and it says Coachella Valley Animal Campus. I cannot see roughly 1/3 of what's on the screen.
Okay, I'll have Jason help you out while we do non-agenda public comment.
Good.
If you are participating remotely and you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now is the time to do so. You would hit *9 on your telephone or the Raise Hand button on the Zoom platform. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Seeing none, let's go to our remote audience. Scott Epstein?
I apologize. My name's actually Michael Schneider. I have been on too many Zooms and forgot to change the name from the last one. Good afternoon. I just wanted to let the council know that I have applied for the vacant Traffic Commission position. I'm here in Sunrise Country Club, been coming to the Coachella Valley since I was very young, and love our city and would love to improve it from a road safety point of view. So I hope the council will consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and for applying. The next speaker will be Mike Gialdini.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. My name's Mike Gialdini. I live in Del Webb. First, I'd like to congratulate this council and previous councils, Isaiah and previous city managers that I worked with, Pat and Randy, for doing--
Can't hear it. Can't hear you.
Can't hear him.
I can't see anything there. Yeah.
Mike, where--
Now I have a square in the middle.
Okay. Sorry to unmute me again. Mike, if you-- you have a volume issue on your end. We can barely hear you.
Who are you talking about? Me?
No, I'm talking to this public speaker.
I'm gonna--
Is that any better?
It's a little better.
I'm at the highest I can get the microphone. That's not helping?
No, can hardly hear you.
Let me try. Is that any better?
Yes.
Better.
Much better.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, sorry.
Hang on. Just hang on another second because Jason is calling and maybe he can get rid of that. Yeah, you mean get up and move?
Just one second, Mike. Please bear with us.
Sure.
I'm off to the side. Vic? Quick. Jason. Don't go all the way over.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Sure. Yeah, I see it. Oh, wait, that microphone, Jesus. I see the camera, but--
Well, I can see now where I couldn't before, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Jason, and for your assistant who was here at the House. I thank her as well. Okay, I'm sorry to have interrupted the last speaker. Can we start that over again?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Mike, we're ready for you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Again, my name is Mike Gialdini. I live in Del Webb, Rancho Mirage. First, I'd like to congratulate this council and previous councils and the previous city managers, Pat and Randy, who I worked with when I worked for Supervisor Benoit Wilson, and amazing job that you guys have done managing our beautiful community and putting together a really nice reserve just for many days like today. I've owned houses here in Rancho Mirage for 13 of the 18 years I've been here, and I've moved back to get into Rancho Mirage, Del Webb. I love it here. People who live here love it here. Virtually everybody, as they walk around or drive around waves, it's kind of interesting to see that happen here. During COVID days, lots of people are here walking around the path system that we have here, playing pickleball or hanging around the pool, which is really beautiful, great views of San Jacinto. If you haven't been here, I'd love to take you on a masked walking tour of the community. One thing I'd like to ask is that if one or two of you would be willing to, within the bounds of the Brown Act, reach out to residents of Del Webb, many of who are new to Rancho Mirage and the Coachella Valley, I think that would be great, either through a single Zoom meeting or a series of Zoom meetings, just to try and welcome people here to Del Webb. Ultimately, what I'd love to see you do is actually assign a member of the council to be a liaison with Del Webb. We're going to have 1,100 homes here, about 500 are built out so far, and I'm not sure that we've had that outreach by council up to this point. Today on the calendar, you have two items on the consent calendar that revolve around Del Webb Rancho Mirage. Those are to go ahead and approve some extensions on track maps. They're mundane and routine, I know, and I definitely support having those approved. But I think it might be worthwhile for council members to go ahead and pull those two items from the consent calendar, to discuss them and ask council or ask staff if any residents of Rancho Mirage, Del Webb, have actually contacted staff and if so, what kind of comments they've been making. Again, I want to thank you guys for a job well done, and I'm happy to be back in Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. Just want to hit a few items here. I would be very brief if I can. The last few days, I've been out in the desert in North Palm Springs looking for three dogs that apparently got escaped from a car on the 24th of January. And not that that concerns Rancho Mirage residents, but I just-- I know where I live on Ferber Drive and Sunny Lane, right in that area. I've lost track of how many dogs I reunited with the owners. So I would just plead if you see a loose dog or even a cat, just keep a minute of note and maybe look on Craigslist and kind of get involved and maybe that will send them home quicker. Okay? And that's all I have on that, but the-- And, oh, I have another note here. I'm sorry. At 6:30 PM tonight, in the northwest sky, look for the space station. Apparently, it's going to be flying by again. It's very neat. I'm an avid looker, and it'll be up there about four minutes. You won't be able to miss it once you look up. Again, it's 6:30 northwest. It's going to disappear in the north, I don't know, east-northeast, I guess. So anyway, that's just my public opinion, but, or comment. And just another thing, I've been talking about citations I've received in my home, and it's about light pollution and stuff, apparently. But I have a appeal hearing. Apparently, the city attorney has forced me to appeal on a certain date, and that's going to be January 9th, this Tuesday, at 3:30 PM. And you can-- I invite everybody to attend. That's 1-800-979-4447. And this rep is number RMAC 1-8379 and 1-8381. I'll be naming names, so it'll be fun. But anyway, and one last thing. The city manager at the last meeting on January 21st, item number nine, it was an art donation. I made comments that the agenda packet, the staff reports were not included in the online platform, and he kind of contradicted that. No offense, but he may have met just the agenda item and not the packet itself. But I sent two emails on the 19th and 20th, and they were not included, so-- And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there's anyone else, I would like to make a non-agenda public comment. Now is the time to do so. If you are on the phone, you would hit *9 or the Raise Hand button on Zoom. Seeing no one else, we will close the non-agenda public comment period, and I will return this to you, Mr. Mayor, for council comments.
Thank you very much. We'll go to council comments. Does anyone have something that they would like to talk about?
Dana, I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Well, I would like to say a few words to bring to everyone's attention that it is with immense sadness that I report the sudden passing of Rancho Mirage's Dr. Dennis Miletie, our own resident expert in emergency preparedness as well as human behavior during disasters. And as you can see, there's a photo of him with his sweet little dog on the video there. Our entire Coachella Valley benefited from the wisdom and experience of Dennis's long and enviable career because he was not only an earthquake expert for Rancho Mirage for over 15 years, but he also worked setting up emergency systems for the state of California. He was also widely recognized as one of the world's leading risk communication scholars. He was highly respected and spoke extensively in Europe, Australia, and Israel, helping them to learn the techniques of preparedness. And he also served as an advisor to the Coachella Valley Disaster Preparedness Network Board. Needless to say, Dennis was admired by all who knew him, and he will be greatly missed, not only by Rancho Mirage, but by his entire profession and by his dear and loving husband, Rick. So if you would like to share your memories of Dennis or view the tribute page at the University of Colorado at Boulder, please contact their natural hazard center, and they can be reached at And so in closing, just a special message to you, Dennis. If you are watching, you are in our thoughts, and we are sending you our love. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Does anyone else have a public comment?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Go ahead, Ted.
I'm going to talk about the paper shredding event that's coming up. If you want to put that on the screen at this time, Jason? All right. Now would be the time to protect your identity and your environment by participating-- I'm sorry. By participating in the city's free document shredding and e-waste collection event. This event will be held on Saturday, February 13th, and available to all Rancho Mirage residents with proof of residency. This free event will take place at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory in the west parking lot from 8:00 AM to noon and when the trucks are full, whichever occurs first. All documents will be shredded on-site and then recycled. Examples of documents one might shred include tax documents, bank statements, real estate transactions, and other legal or confidential papers that one does not want to put in the regular recycle bin. Shredding will be limited to six 12-by-17-by-9-inch boxes of documents per resident. E-waste, such as old televisions, computers, monitors, cell phones, printers, and household electronics will also be collected free of charge and recycled. Residents may also drop off batteries for household devices such as laptops, flashlights, handheld radios, and other small household electronics. Household hazardous waste, such as paint, pesticides, automobile batteries, light bulbs, will not be accepted at this event. For more information, you may contact City Hall at 760-324-4511. We hope to see you there. I also would like to mention several other things, Mayor, that one of the pleasures, in my opinion, one of the gratifications of public service is far beyond any compensation that we may receive, is when we get gratitude expressed to us by constituents. Two letters were received this week that were extremely gratifying and rewarding, and I'd like to share them with our audience. One was from an individual, a businessman in Rancho Mirage, that says the following. "The city of Rancho Mirage has really stepped up for all of the merchants, especially the restaurants. I wanted to reach out to all of you to give you the biggest thank you I could. As you know, I am involved with restaurants in other cities in the valley, and none of them has taken care of their own as you have, starting with the $8,000 grant back in May, continuing with the Great Plates Program, and now offering grants to businesses in need. I want to convey to you how all of this has helped not only me, but my restaurants and the employees that work for me. It has also enabled me to donate 20 pizzas every Monday to Eisenhower COVID nurses and ER department, and every Thursday, 80 burritos to those departments since April. And we have vowed to continue to make those donations until those heroes get back to living a normal life." So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so proud to have my restaurants located in the great city of Rancho Mirage. I hope and pray that all of you and your families are safe and healthy. That, to me, is probably as great a reward as any of us can receive. And I must tell you, Jack, without getting into it, thank you for your kindness. And one last, very brief comment was from another resident that said I'm a longtime Eisenhower Medical Center patient. They are always timely and excellent. On January 25th, I activated my chart and received a call within two hours that I could come in on either the 30th, the 29th or 30th, for a vaccine. I arrived-- My time was 8:30. I arrived at 8:45. I was gone in roughly 30 minutes. So extremely well organized. Again, thank you, Eisenhower Health. Thank you to the city of Rancho Mirage. And most importantly, we thank you for showing the appreciation. That's the-- that is our reward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Richard?
No, thanks, Mayor. Thank you.
I just have one remark. I wanted to also pay homage to the loss of Dennis Miletie and my regrets to his husband. He's one of the finest people you could ever know. And I know that back in the early days, I played a good role in persuading him to come and help out the city. And boy, he sure did that in a thousand ways. At any rate, Dennis Miletie, we're going to miss you big time. Okay, city manager comments?
None today. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and can we have a motion with respect to approving amendments?
Make a motion to accept.
January 21st.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Kristi, can you take the vote on that, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend? Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
And Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have nine items for consideration on your consent calendar today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to appoint Mr. Rob Moon to the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation Board. Item number three is extension of completion date for track map number 36809-3, Del Webb Rancho Mirage. Item number four is second extension of completion date for track map number 36809-2, Del Webb Rancho Mirage. Item number five is the receiving file of the December 31st, 2020 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number six is Resolution Number 2021, Next in Order, Adopting Investment Policies Pertaining to the Investment of City Funds. Item number seven is Resolution Number 2021, Next in Order, Adopting a COVID-19 Prevention Program and Return to Work Policy Handbook for the City. Item number eight are contracts, and item number nine are demands. And before we move to council comments, if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on one of these items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would press *9 on your telephone or the Raise Hand button on Zoom before we go to our remote audience. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on the consent calendar? Seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. And Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Great. Yeah, I figured phone out again. Hi, my name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I think it's item number two, just appointments. Well, I want to talk about number seven, too, item seven. But number two, I wish the city would be more transparent with the candidates for appointments, if there aren't any candidates. Not that I don't think your candidates are well-selected or well-suited or overqualified for those positions, but I think a little transparency of how these candidates come to be and come to be selected would be not interesting, but just a matter of fact for the city residents, for me, anyway. And number seven, I don't believe-- What is that? That's adoption of a COVID-19 preventive program and return to work policy handbook for the city. I don't think that should be a consent item, and I think it needs to be read completely into the record because there are some aspects of the wording that's really alarming and quite fear-mongering in certain aspects. And apparently, the city is requiring people to be tested, too. So I don't know if your union's on board with that, but again, I don't think this is a consent item, and it needs to be read completely into the record so everybody in the city knows exactly what this entails. And it concerns private citizens, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mike Gialdini, go ahead.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I'd appreciate it if council would go ahead and remove three and four, or at least pull three and four for discussion about Del Webb, just to have staff explain how things are going in the biggest construction community going on right now in Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no one else that wishes to speak on the consent calendar, we will return this to the city council for questions or comments.
Yes, I have a comment, if I may. And I'd like to say I'd like to thank the council for considering endorsing my nomination of Robert Moon to sit on the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation Board. Rob has an extensive list of biographical experiences too long for me to even read here. However, I will mention, too, retiring from the U.S. Navy with the rank of commander, serving for 17-year career. Also, he was elected to Palm Springs Council as mayor, serving from 2015 to 2019. Retiring and purchasing a home in Rancho Mirage last year, he brings with him all the skills and knowledge to our observatory and library board. I know that Rob joining this board will lead to continuing involvement in the future of Rancho Mirage, and I appreciate you considering. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to comment on that?
I'll be happy to comment. I had the pleasure of serving with Rob on a number of committees, a number of SEBAG committees, Transportation Executive Committee. Rob is highly qualified, knows the valley very well, and he will make a very good commissioner on the Library and Observatory Board.
I would add that not only will he make a good commissioner, he'll probably excel at it. He's a very bright fellow and a good selection, Charlie.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think so.
Okay. Let's go to the discussion with respect to the Del Webb issue. I think we should pull the two items, number three and number four. We'll pull them right now for discussion. The gentleman who asked for them to be pulled has given the floor at this point in time.
So do you want to take a motion on the remaining consent calendar items? And then we'll come back and do a quick staff presentation on items three and four?
Isaiah, I have one question, if we could, on a different item.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to pull the items, so-- What number do you want to pull, Richard?
I just had a question on item number five.
Go ahead.
In looking at the breakdown on page 510 concerning the library endowment summary, the funds, as they're shown here, the endowment cash and operating cash. The endowment cash is disclosed. It's in the city pool right now. Does that include all of the funds that are in the endowment fund as opposed to having any invested in a different area?
Yes, so the endowment funds are 100% in the city pool.
Okay, so in the past, we had some monies invested with Vanguard-- Okay, so in the past, we had some monies invested with Vanguard. Those funds have been liquidated?
Yes, so the Director of Administrative Services, basically those funds were invested some time ago, a few years ago, if not more than five years ago. And so we realized the gain on that investment. And he's working with our current investment advisor to work up a new strategy for those endowment funds that can be invested in other avenues. So the, I believe it's twenty percent of the endowment funds can be invested within the stock market.
Right. Okay, well, that's great. I didn't realize that we were working on various alternatives right now. But given the current situation with interest rates where they are, I think a portion of the funds invested in other quality investments would make sense. So thank you.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, accepting items three and four, which have been pulled for a separate discussion as per the Dell Web issue.
As it were to me, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Christie?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. So we will go back to item three and four. And I'll turn this over to Jesse Eckenroth, our Director of Public Works.
Let's settle on one thing first procedurally. Can we just consider the two of them equally discussable at this point? Or do we have to separate the discussions?
Do you have a preference?
I think we should put it all together and just when we're done, then we vote on the two of them.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. So yes, in essence, item number three and item number four are doing the same thing. And so to give you kind of a brief background on what those items are, it is an extension of subdivision improvement agreement. What a subdivision improvement agreement does is it assures the city through bonding that the contractor or the developer does that should the contractor or the developer walk away, the city has bonds in place to finish the work. The contractor, the developer has not, they have not wanted to stop progress on the work. They're going to continue their bonds and they're progressing through that work. So the subdivision improvement agreements give us a way to continue those bonds, to assure that the work is going to be complete with the performance security of the bond in place. My experience with Dell Web has been very positive. They are working through the punch list items. They've been addressing the items that we have noted for them to either wrap up or any of the little corrections that we have for them. Our inspectors are out routinely inspecting the site. They develop a punch list and Dell Web has done probably ninety percent of all the things noted on the punch list. They still have a few remaining items. And if there's any other questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. And why don't we go ahead and open up the public comment period on these two items? So if any member of the public would like to speak on these two items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on these two items? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I support approving these items. I did land use for Supervisor Wilson in Benoit and in general, Polte is a good company. Here in Dell Web Rancho Mirage, owners are having some issues with the onsite staff, fixing up some things that we think need to be, to be addressed. The way it works is Dell Web goes ahead and puts three of their employees on the five-member board.
Can you speak up, Mike, or get closer?
I'm sorry, okay. Dell Web, Polte goes ahead and puts five members on a, on an HOA board. Three of those members end up being either Polte employees or Polte contractors. Those folks are the ones that approve moving property from Polte's ownership to the HOA's ownership. There are two resident owners, but it's really the three Polte owners, employees that approve those things. We are having some issues with some of the common grounds items that have already been switched to the HOA's ownership. Some of staff is aware of those and Polte has promised to fix, at least retention ponds with their money. We have some issues with the lake that the city's looked at. And those items have not been approved yet by Polte to play versus having the HOA to pay. In general, again, Polte's doing a nice job. I love my house, love the community. But I just want to make sure that you guys know that we're five hundred houses through eleven hundred houses and that there are a number of owners who would like, maybe to have better communications with council. It would be nice if council would go ahead and see if someone on the council would like to be assigned to be the liaison with Dell Web. Ultimately, that's what I'd like to see happen. But again, I do, I do support getting these two items approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that would like to speak on these items, we will close the public comment period and I'll return it back to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
We've approved, yeah.
I just have a couple of comments on this, if I may. I'm sure we all received letters from a various number of residents to Dell Web addressing this issue. And Dell Web development is really important for our city and being the largest and with more growth taking on place there. You know, I think it would be worthwhile if we looked into the issue of doing a subcommittee, even if it would be temporary, I think between now and the next few years when the rest of the properties are finished, I think it would be worthwhile to have the city representative meet with Dell Web. And I think a subcommittee certainly would be appropriate where you could have two members of the city council on this committee. And I think it would bring the development and the residents a lot closer to the city and let us understand better what some of the issues are there. Thank you, Richard.
Any further discussion on these items?
Yeah, Mayor, let me, let me say this. As a developer, the structure that Polte has set up regarding having three members on the board is standard procedure for all developments. In other words, the developer obviously maintains control of the HOA until all of the amenities are turned over to the HOA. Because basically they're the ones that are, that are finishing it up. And there is absolutely nothing wrong with having a liaison of some kind. The important thing is that from a city, that we never interfere between the developer and the HOA. That's by and between those entities. But we're always open to listen. Matter of fact, Richard Kite and myself addressed the HOA board about five months ago. And so we were there and I go over there reasonably often. So the, the structure that exists is not abnormal. On the contrary, it's standard. And I think that Polte is doing an excellent job considering the size of the project. So that being said, I think that I leave it up to the council to decide how they would like to proceed.
We can do that on a different, at a different meeting, the next meeting. This would not be the one to make that kind of a decision based on very little information. So that, those of you who are interested in that subject, that is council members, get that on the calendar for another meeting and we'll dig into it. So is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the items that we've been talking about?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve items three and four of the consent calendar.
Let's get everything that's left. Isaiah, what has not been approved?
Mayor Protem Wile's motion will approve everything that is remaining.
For three items or two?
Two items, Mayor.
Two items, numbers again, give me it.
Three and four.
I'll second it.
Okay. Time to vote. Isaiah, can you take the vote?
Sure, Christie, go ahead.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. That motion included eight and nine, didn't it?
We, the council has approved all nine consent calendar items now.
Okay, moving now to the action calendar. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will move on to item number ten on the agenda, which is ordinance number next in order, first reading, amending section ten point six zero point zero two zero, speed limits of chapter ten point six zero, speed regulation of title ten vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Jesse Eckenroth, our Director of Public Works, will handle this item. Jesse?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman, Mayor and Council. I really tried hard to find a fun fact about speed limits so I could start this message with a fun fact, but I was not able to. So the next time I'm going to give a presentation on speed limits, I will try and find a fun fact. So far, nothing. So before I get started, Jason, if you could pull the PowerPoint up, I want to just show the segment that we're going to talk about today. The blue shaded portion on the top of the screen is Palm Desert and then the orange shaded portion on the bottom of the screen is Rancho Mirage. See if we can get these to fly in here. This is Miriam Way, which is on the Palm Desert side, George Montgomery Way, which is on the Rancho Mirage side. This is a fifty mile an hour segment on Dyna Shore. It currently goes all the way to Monterey Avenue. A recent speed survey was done and it's recommending a forty-five mile an hour segment just between George Montgomery Way and Monterey Avenue in that area that I am clicking on and off of right there. So that's the area that we're talking about. Jason, you can go ahead and remove that from the screen. Thank you. So the California Vehicle Code sets regulations governing roadway speed limits within the state and engineering and traffic surveys are performed periodically to confirm or amend the speed limits. The city of Rancho Mirage performed an engineering and traffic survey in twenty seventeen, which is still considered valid and current. However, the city of Rancho Mirage shares several roadways with neighboring cities. One of the code jurisdictional roadways is Dyna Shore Drive and it's being divided in part between Rancho Mirage and Palm Desert, as I just displayed on the screen. And Palm Desert recently performed a traffic and engineering survey citywide and Dyna Shore was one of the segments that was included in that survey. The survey recommended a speed limit reduction from fifty miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour between Monterey and George Montgomery Way. And the California Vehicle Code requires both jurisdictions to approve speed limits on boundary-lined streets. Palm Desert has adopted ordinance one three six one to amend speed limits per the engineering and traffic study. And now staff is recommending that the council considers approval of the engineering and traffic survey as it relates to the section of Dyna Shore between Monterey Avenue and George Montgomery Way, which would reduce the speed limit from fifty miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Do you have questions?
Let's go ahead and do the public comment on this item, Mr. Mayor. So if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in person, seeing no one remotely that has indicated they would like to speak, we will close the public comment period on this item and I'll turn it over to the council for questions and comments.
Does anybody have any comments or motions?
I will make a motion that the city council, A, accept findings and recommendations for the Palm Desert Engineering and Traffic Survey dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty, only as it pertains to Dyna Shore Drive between George Montgomery Way, Marion Way and Monterey Avenue. And B, introduce ordinance number next in order, first reading amendment section number ten dash sixty dash zero two zero, speed limits designated of chapter ten dash sixty, speed regulation of title ten vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code.
Second.
I'll second that.
This has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Christie? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just one comment from me. You know, anytime we talk about speed limits, we, all of us get contacted numerous times through the year about concern with local speed limits and the speed on our local roads. And so anytime we're talking about speed limits, you know, I just, I like to vent a little local frustration with the lack of local control over our speed limits. So the way that we are required by state law to set our speed limits is through a formula that the state has adopted. And we are required by this law to set those speed limits at whatever that formula says at the end of the traffic survey. And essentially it says you'll set your speed limit at the eighty-fifth percentile of speeds that people are actually driving. Really what this does is it rewards speeding. So as we study roadways and you take the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, we seem to always be increasing our speed limits. And at a local level, if you don't follow the state mandated formula and set your speed limits at the eighty-fifth percentile, you lose the ability to enforce that speed limit because it becomes a speed trap. So it's a very frustrating topic that as the city, and these are our local streets and roads, you know, we don't have more discretion from the state to manage our own speed limits and consider things like pedestrian and bicycle safety. So, you know, this is always a struggle for us here locally. And I just wanted to express those frustrations that it seems that the state is just constantly doing things like this to do this one-size-fits-all formula and they don't really consider the implications of that. So this is one area specifically where the state really needs to review this issue and give local governments a little bit more local control over our speed limits to address our community's needs. But as it is now, we don't have that discretion. So that's the.
Isaiah, I'd like to ask you a question. The way this is lined up at the moment, if we did nothing, our speed limit would stay at fifty miles an hour. Is that right?
Yeah, so the action that you have before you is lowering a speed limit, which is always a good thing.
Yeah. So you're not arguing for the speed limit of forty-five miles an hour of being negative?
No, I think this action is a good thing because it lowers speed in a high-traffic area. My general comment was just on this topic. When we are forced to increase speed limits because of that eighty-fifth percentile, it gets rather frustrating from a city perspective.
What kind of information did we get from Palm Desert as to what they wanted? What they're hoping that the experts that they retained would find?
Well, it's not, it's not really about trying to find something. It's a rather simple process. They go out there and study the roadway and the speeds on it and then you pick the eighty-fifth percentile of that and you set the speed limit accordingly. So with this item, you know, from a staff perspective, we're recommending approval because it is lowering a speed limit. My comments were just in general, since we were on the topic of speed limits. It's always a little frustrating at the local level when we don't have a little bit more discretion over this because lowering speed limits is, seems to be pretty rare these days.
Isaiah, I would like to also comment because I know I. Isaiah, I would like to also comment because I know I hear from a number of our residents and non-residents who always complain about how fast people are allowed to travel, and it is frustrating. And I remember talking about it several years ago when Bruce Harry was on the dais, and my comment was the faster you go, the harder you hit. And of course, he said that, you know, this, we have to abide by the state rules. Are there any times when these rules are revamped by the state? Or are there any other cities that would like to approach Sacramento and find out what can be done?
Yeah, I think.
So we have, so that we have more control as cities because we really know what's going on in our city.
Yeah, absolutely. And there is, there have been many conversations over this topic from various agencies, not just us. You know, unfortunately, with the, you know, kind of climate with the state of California is they don't seem to be giving back any additional local control. They only seem to be taking away more of it as they dictate from Sacramento. So, you know, these concerns are pretty widely known. They're shared by many at the local level. There's even been, you know, a few actions at the RCTC level to try to get some traction to throw in some considerations when we're doing these studies. You know, but that gets pretty complicated at the state level because especially during the COVID era, the state's attention has been focused elsewhere. But it is definitely something that gets brought up by local government year after year after year. It's just the state, for one reason or another, has not addressed this issue.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing further, we'll, there's a motion, as I recall, to approve the item.
Christie, will you please do the vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. We will now move on to item number 11 on our agenda, which is an award of contract for the preparation of a grant-funded local roadway safety plan to KOA Corporation in the amount of $65,768. Jesse, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman, Mayor and Council. I guess now everyone understands why I could not find a fun fact about speed limits.
Yeah. No such thing.
Right, difficult. So if you find one, send it my way.
Okay.
So good news on this item before you. The city was awarded a grant to cover $72,000 in expenses to prepare a roadway safety plan. And what the roadway safety plan will do is gather collision data to identify the roadway locations that suffer from the highest percentage of traffic accidents, and those will include bicycle and pedestrian accidents as well. And based on the specific elements of each location, a proposal to reduce accidents will be sent to the city for the top 10 locations. And beginning in 2022, a roadway safety plan is actually going to be a required element for all HCP grant applications, and that is the grant that our Signal Synchronization Project is being funded through. Now, this plan that we're going to start on will be complete before the 2022 deadline, and it will help focus our efforts to the high priorities, priority areas identified in the report. So to attain a consultant to prepare the safety plan, the city issued an RFP and ranked the proposals to select the most qualified firm. KOA Corporation was the highest ranked firm, and the cost for the roadway plan was negotiated to align with an independent cost estimate that we prepared. Staff has confirmed KOA's ability to meet the project deadline and confirmed their ability to commence work immediately upon award. Staff recommends approval of the contract and is requesting a budget adjustment of $65,768 to cover the lag in the reimbursement period. The contract will be reimbursed through the state grant, but likely in the following fiscal year, therefore triggering the request for the budget adjustment in this current fiscal year. But ultimately, there will be no impact to the budget as the entire amount of the contract will be reimbursed through the grant. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Seeing no one that has indicated that they would like to speak, we will go ahead and close the public comment period, and I'll turn this over to the council.
Does anyone have something they'd like to say with respect to this?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I will. One, in my opinion, one of the areas in our city that doesn't get a lot of notoriety is the area of grant writing, which falls under Jesse's domain in the Public Works Department. This is a critical area and is so vitally important. Grant writing is probably the essence, or one of the essence of our budget each year. I mean, here's an example of us essentially getting reimbursed through a grant. We've all talked about the Frank Sinatra Bridge for a long time, which, by the way, was approved at the SEVAG meeting this week. Unfortunately, the funds are not going to be available from the grant probably for the year 23, 24, as far as the bridge itself is concerned. But I merely want to point out, and I want to give kudos to Jesse and your folks that do the grant writing for, again, coming up with, in this case, virtually all of the money for this vitally important contribution. So Jesse, thank you. And that's one that has a lot of humor because it's so satisfying for the benefit of our city. Nicely done. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to comment?
Dana, I would like to make a comment because as you go through this item on our agenda on page 11-15, it talks about the collisions by severity and the fact that we were just talking about that. In light of the speeds that we're allowed to travel at, I'd like to commend all of our drivers. I know that people complain about things, but in light of these statistics regarding accidents and injuries, and you look at all the pedestrians and the cyclists that are out there and that are not careful, I'm always amazed when I drive through parking lots of people who just walk out of a store, not even look either way, step off the curb and walk to their car. And it's not always easy to avoid some of these pedestrians and some of these bicyclists, especially when the bicyclists are cutting through traffic, when they're not going night with the green light, when pedestrians are walking the wrong, on the wrong side of the street as they are traveling by foot. So I think that our drivers are doing a remarkable job, and the statistics really show how careful they have been. And I would like to applaud them. And with that, if there are no other comments, I will make the motion.
You can make the motion even if there are further comments, because we can let.
Okay, okay, well.
Is there a second to the motion?
Okay, I will move that, A, and we, the council awards a contract for the preparation of a local roadway safety plan to KOA Corporation in the amount of $65,768 with no contingency, and B, approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $65,768 for engineering professional/technical
I'll second that.
Thank you. Christie, would you take a vote on this, please?
Of course. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, moving on to number 12. Isaiah, you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12 on our agenda is the COVID-19 State of Emergency Update and Related Actions. There is one action that staff is requesting from the council, and that is to extend our face cover order here locally. There's a few other items that I'd like to give the council just an informational update Right now, our face cover order aligns with the state of California face cover order, and if this extension is approved by the council, it would be in effect until March 4th, 2021, which is the date of our next council meeting. The Great Plates Delivery Program, it's currently scheduled through February 6th, so the end of this week. We are expecting to hear today or tomorrow whether that program will get extended or not. This tight turnaround has been very common in past extensions, so we are hoping that that program is extended again. We have 376 participants. Since the inception of this program, the city has delivered over 214,000 meals to at-risk seniors in our community. Through the program, that's 4.7 million to date to our local restaurants, and the city's cost share of that 4.7 million is about $288,000. It's been a great program, both for our at-risk seniors and for our restaurants. The COVID-19 testing at our library through Curative, we're on day 43 of that. Through that testing site, there have been approximately 28,000 tests administered. The positivity rate is still high. It's around 15, between 15 and 18% at our site. And right now, that testing is scheduled to continue through the end of March as long as there is a demand for testing. If the demand drops off and people no longer need tests, then we will no longer have that site there. The city also launched the Rancho Mirage Small Business Relief Grant Program. Staff is still reviewing the applications received. The application period deadline has ended. That was January 31st, and there were 72 businesses that applied through that program. Right now, based on completed applications and necessary paperwork, staff has approved 44, 44 locally owned businesses for a total of 315,000 in support. The remaining applications are either pending additional paperwork or have been denied because they did not meet the eligibility criteria. And with that, that concludes my presentation on this item, and we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button on Zoom. Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak? Seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Again, that's star nine on your telephone or the raise hand button. Okay, seeing no one that wishes to speak on this item remotely either, I'll return this to the council, Mr. Mayor.
Does anybody wish to discuss this matter?
I just have a question. What is the total budget with that 315,000 that's been given out or the 72 people who have applied?
So the council, back in November, approved a budget of $500,000.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I have a question of Isaiah concerning local restaurants. What are the guidelines now as far as restaurants opening and being able to provide certain levels of service?
Yeah, so we're back in the purple tier, so that includes outdoor dining only.
Okay, and takeout?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right. Can anybody or can the restaurants utilize any inside facilities?
No, you cannot dine inside.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this point? Seeing none. Is there any vote you see that we need to take or extend the order? Yeah, okay.
I think we need a motion on to extend the order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I just said. Can we have a motion then?
I'll be happy to do that. I'll make a motion to extend the order from the City Manager, Director of Emergency Services of the City of Rancho Mirage, requiring face coverings. He warned in accordance with the November 16, 2020 guidance for the use of face coverings issued by the California Department of Public Health through March 4, 2021, and B, take any other action deemed necessary.
I'll second that.
Please, vote, and Christie, if you'll take it, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend? Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Is there anything further before us, Isaiah?
Just for our city attorney to summarize the closed session agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Before I announce what we're doing in closed session, I have a comment about the speed limits. I do have some fun facts, but I'd have to take the fifth before I talked about those, so you're not going to hear about them. So in any event. Yeah, I know some other fun facts, too, I can't talk about. In any event, so the city council at this point is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding one potential significant exposure to litigation, and that, again, relates to the short-term rentals issue. We are also going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section This is regarding three pending litigation items, and these are all just updates. The first case is Hometown Colony versus the City of Rancho Mirage, then there's Save Rancho Mirage versus the City of Rancho Mirage, and Horizon Pacific Rancho Cove versus the City of Rancho Mirage. And so those are the four items we'll be discussing in closed session.
Steve, what was that second issue again?
The second issue is the Hometown Colony versus the City of Rancho Mirage. Save, Save Rancho Mirage versus the City of Rancho Mirage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll see you in closed session.
See you there.
Okay, the city council will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. All right, it is 3:38, and the city council took no reportable action on any of the closed session items, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.